So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I have 7:00 PM. We have no changes to the agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
Well, my roll call.
Counselor Caceres.
Hi.
Counselor Seha.
Hi.
Counselor Ecclestone.
Hi.
Counselor Lee.
Hi.
Counselor Seeny.
Hi.
Counselor Wick.
Hi.
Mayor Clevenger.
Hi.
And that passes.
All right, so public comment. I'm not seeing anybody in the attendees list on here. You have anybody present who would like to make any public comment?
Yes, I believe so. Go ahead and step up. And if you could state your name?
Hi, I'm Mike Flueeling. I just have a comment on artificial turf. My wife and I'd like to put artificial turf in our yard of Buma Street. It's going to be professionally done is what it was. Got contractor all set up, paid some money out, found out that when the, what is ordinance 705 states, no artificial state, it has to be living turf. And I'd like to see that either changed or get an exception to do artificial turf, some professional landscaping. Artificial turf is, looks great for 15 to 25 years. It's better for the environment, less water. You don't have all the fertilizers going in. You don't have all the weed control. You don't have a whole bunch of stuff. It's just what I'd like to see. Just an exception or amendment to the ordinance if possible.
Thanks, Mike. You know, we, and just so the council knows, Mike and I had a couple of conversations about this. I spoke with Ron as well. And we are looking at the ordinance, looking at the rules to try and figure out a way to ensure that it is representative of what, what the community needs. And I expressed my opinion that, you know, I do think it was, it was probably a misstep on our part to not include turf. And if we are going to make changes, you know, putting some criteria in there that involves it being, you know, professionally installed and things like that, I think would be in order. So Ron, I don't know if you can speak to any, any work you've done on that, you know, obviously with things like this, it takes a while. But it is definitely a discussion that has been had.
Yeah, you know, the only thing about this, I told Mike that something we can look into, but it would really, we'd have to get direction from the council to work on it. An ordinance exception, obviously, we wouldn't want to make, we wouldn't want to go through the time and expense for one change. So I'd want to wait for the next round of changes. Whenever that is, and I told Mike, it's probably to go through the process. And if council did direct us to do that, you know, it's probably a year long process to change that code. We've done one every year actually in the last two years because we're trying to refine it and take out some of those problem areas. My only concern with making this change is we specifically changed the code to get rid of some of these problem areas. And basically to make that change, we'd have to figure out a way to craft it with some sort of of exception that it didn't open up the door to people interpreting landscaping and stuff as, you know, artificial or ornamental. Because then that gets us back into the whole category of what constitutes landscaping. And we just spent two or three years getting, getting out of that. And then the question is, is how do you craft it so that somebody isn't just, you know, professionally done can be interpreted, artificial turf, you know, what's the quality of that? How's it installed? Really, if you're going to create an exception like this, it's going to be a little laborious because we're going to have to have some sort of a design standard like we do with our, our public works infrastructure, like streets and things like that. Otherwise, we're just really going to struggle with the implementation of, you know, folks going and buying, you know, a low grade artificial turf. And you've seen those where they just basically look like a green carpet. And then pretty soon, you know, you've got creases and seams and rolls in the middle of the front yard. It just doesn't look very good. So it's really up to council. I think we could do it. It will take a little bit of effort if you'd like an exception like that. If you want it not to create the problems that we're trying to get away from it. Just, it's just will take a little bit of time to solve.
When did we change the ordinance last? How long ago was it?
Well, our ordinance never allowed artificial, anything artificial. It's always said living.
Is that in the front yard only? Are we talking about front or backyard?
No, the backyard, I told, I told Mike, he can do it. He can put artificial turf in the backyard. He wants to put it in the front yard. And that's where we're really specific about the code. But our codes always said living, that the plant is supposed to be living. What we've done the last few years is because we've had a lot of people try to reinterpret that as in how much and where. And, you know, the size of the plants, we've had people that put seeds in the ground and says, we put the plants there. You know, and so we really went through a lot of effort over the last few years trying to take some of that out so that people weren't trying to manipulate the code. What I would do is if we wanted to do something like this is first, we should go see some professionally done turf sites and see what it looks like. And then that might help. Maybe I could go do some pictures. Bring that back to council if you're interested. And then that might help you make a visual connection to decide, is this really a look and feel that you'd want to see in front yards? In the city. And then if so, what I would do is create an exception. So we keep the code intact. But we'd create some sort of exception with a, with a design standard. That, that would be my recommendation.
If we did that, how long would that take?
Well, I didn't want to give a timeframe to it. I said a year. I will tell you that we are out of capacity with workload right now. I'm really, really struggling to work on these projects that we have going on in the city with the available staff that I have. And I wouldn't want to give a short term guarantee to Mike if we were doing anything of what that would be. So, you know, I could certainly fit it in. Remember, we do have to do public notices. We have to do a public hearing in front of the planning commission. Then we have to do a public hearing in front of the council. We have to notice DLCD. In addition to writing the code. So this, even if I said this was our top priority, you know, it's several month process.
Anybody else got anything?
I think it's appropriate and would probably be good for us to look into it, especially since we have more people moving to the area. Want turf on their front and backyards is to limit and reduce their labor that they have to do to maintain. So to be open minded to it and put some good guidelines around. So then we still have consistency throughout the city. I mean, we don't want somebody putting strange brown tumbleweed grass and glitter in their front yard. It's everything is wrong with glitter. It's windy here.
And that's why I think it's an exception. Yeah. An exception specific to, to the turf with some sort of standard.
Yes, Ted, if, if we had some kind of visuals and some things to go off of and go, if we're going to make an exception, let's try to get hone in, hone in as much as we think we want to go and try to allow something for him, but also for the research and work on making an adjustment to our codes for the next, next time around. So then we could address this because if there's other people that are wanting to do it, we're going to get a flood of people starting to ask. And if it's a need for the community, especially with water costs going up, there may be a lot more people interested in trying to reduce their expenses.
Yep.
I've seen this done in Salem in more than one yard. Done right. It looks great. It looks better than my lawn in the summer because I don't use as much water. So, and that's done correctly. It looks great.
Yeah. That's the key, done correctly.
I mean, my front yard looks like garbage right now. Turf would look better than my front yard.
It needs glitter, Derek.
Yeah. I know, I know, we can't do it next. I know we can't do it next week, but I think it's something that is appropriate for us to try to take on and.
I could certainly do the research and put it on our list for the next ordinance amendment. I'm sure that we've going to have to do an ordinance amendment this year. I just don't know when I can get to it. Right now, our, our priority is $23 million for sewer treatment facility. And we have to manage several multi-million dollar projects. We've got a public works facility. We've got an emergency generator project. We've got a new reservoir, new well project. In addition to the sewer treatment facility, we don't have an in-house manager that has to be managed by your, your current staff and all of the contracts in our sewer facility. We're going to probably be managing five federal grants or loans as part of that project. And we just don't have the capacity in-house. Now, that doesn't mean we can't do things that are service related for the community. It just means I want council to understand the time expectation is not going to be as immediate as we might have done two or three years ago when we weren't doing.
I think, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
The last conversation I had with, with Mike on the phone the other day, I said, hey, you know, this is, obviously, you know, I, I think the council, the whole recognizes that this was probably just an oversight on our part to not include turf. You do it the right way. It does look fantastic. Obviously, this is not a change that can happen overnight. So I had asked Mike, just hey, you know, be patient, please. You know, this is something that obviously we want to be responsive to community members and we want to recognize the win. When, you know, there was an oversight on our part, but it's, it's not something we can turn around and fix next week. Anybody, is anybody opposed to Ron exploring this?
This, the only thing I have on that is instead of making like a ordinance change to allow people to jump in on it, is make it a permit base. And so that way the city can inspect, make sure it's being done professionally, and they can go through all the works.
Yeah. So council member, they would have to do a permit because we've actually already done that. We've initiated a type A permit for any major changes in landscaping. So they currently would have to do that. But because the way that we, the ordinance is very specific, remember, if you made the ordinance ambiguous, people will try to interpret it differently. Remember, we had the guy who was required to put grass in his front yard, but because the ordinance didn't specify how much grass, he put it in one square foot patch of grass in the middle of a bunch of bark. It's that kind of stuff. Now, I'm just saying that that is an example of how the code gets, you know, interpreted differently than it's intended to be. And, and we can't enforce it if, if it's, if it doesn't say a little clearer, clearer, clearer what the intent is. So, so yeah, we'll, we'll have to do a code amendment. I don't see us being able to allow this in the current code with the language that it's in. And I looked at it on Mike's behalf. I read it a number of times. And I tried to think, okay, well, if I look at this section and interpret it differently, but we did a really good job at writing the landscaping code. And so it would need, we'd need to put in some sort of an exception. And I say, keep the code intact, but make an exception allowance for, and maybe there's other things besides turf that we would include that are these maybe drought tolerant. You know, plants and things like that are landscaping, rain gardens, things of that nature that might be an exception to the, with the way that we put that in there. But I could certainly do some research and come back to council with a report.
All right. If, if nobody's opposed, then I would say, yeah, that's, that's the direction to go on that. Cool. Do we have anybody else who wanted to give public comment? All right, moving on then. Consent agenda. Everybody else get a chance to read through everything, all that stuff? Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, any issues? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Well, my roll call.
Counselor Caceres.
Hi.
Counselor Seha.
Hi.
Counselor Ecclestone.
Hi.
Counselor Lee.
Hi.
Counselor Seeny.
Hi.
Counselor Wick.
Hi.
Mayor Clevenger. And motion passes.
All right. So old business, we've got nothing. New business, integrity signs contract. That's the electronic sign that we've talked about. You know, this was something that came up after the freeze and me and Nico and Angie and Ron and Chief and everything, we're all brainstorming stuff to try and keep the community looped in when we have issues like that, obviously. Take it away, Ron.
Yeah. So council approved this project in the budget and it was set up as one of your amended goals that you put together. We went out and got a number of proposals from three different sign companies. We actually got several different proposals and we ended up fixating in on a elevated pole sign in front of the community center. We're going to have to do some re-landscaping out there and some electrical work in the community center. The reason why that location is optimal is because of, if we have an event like a power outage, because the community center is generated with emergency power. And the sign can be connected to that. So the sign can be generated with emergency power. But it has a lot of other benefits besides an event, and that is just general community messages. Right now, we post stuff on a physical bulletin board and people have to drive in, get out of their car, walk up to the bulletin board to look for meeting notices and development notices and things of that nature, which we'll be able to use this sign for all those types of messages as well as things like our events that we do. And just good community messages, things like, you know, spring cleanup or, you know, cut your weeds down in the middle of the summer. You know, we're going to do code enforcement on junk in the front yard. Whatever that message may be, just a good reminder to the community and anybody driving by will be able to see that. The, the only issue in our research, you know, we kind of had this very unusual situation last February where we had cell service out and we had power out in the community. So even if we had power here, people at their homes didn't have power to receive it or internet to receive it. And so that's one of the reasons why we thought, well, if people are driving by to get supplies and things like that, you know, they would see a message versus us being able to send a message out. And ultimately, how I see us doing this is having multiple platforms of communication. There's some software packages where we could subscribe to it and we can do like a reverse 911 notice that goes out. I think the, 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 the countywide dispatch system that we're connected to is actually looking at some upgrades. And maybe it'll include some of that stuff. So there's lots of different things we could do. This would be one platform for us. Now, the difficulty is you either have to have it connected to an internet line or you have to have it connected to a cell transmitter, one of those two. That's how these signs work. And so, you know, we're, we've leaned towards the cell transmitter with this one because rarely do, does the cell service go out. We're more likely have the internet service go out. And so as long as we load the messages and the messages are loaded into the cloud software, the sign can display the messages, even if that cell service goes down. Or that internet connection goes down. So we've, after doing a lot of research, our lowest responsive bidder was integrity signs in the amount of $40,428. And then of course, there's going to be some electrical cost and some permitting and engineering cost for the sign, but we'll be well within the city's budget of $60,000 on this project. If you award that, we'll get the project going and it'll be done this year. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have anything? I feel like this is something we've talked about quite a bit at this point. All right. Well, do we have any motions?
I move to authorize the purchase of an electronic sign from Integrity Science, the amount of $40,428 plus the cost of engineering and permitting as presented by staff.
I'll second.
Well, my roll call.
Counselor Caceres.
Hi.
Counselor Seha.
Hi.
Counselor Ecclestone.
Hi.
Counselor Lee.
Hi.
Counselor Seeny.
Hi.
Counselor Wick.
Hi.
Mayor Clevenger.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Next we've got, I, I kind of, I want to try and sound it out just as if it was one word, L, L H W A P. It's the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program.
All right. So this is a program that was funded through the state to the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency. And it is the Low Income Water Assistance Program. And basically what this agreement does is it gives low income ratepayers that may be within our jurisdiction an option to help get their utilities cost paid as long as they meet those standards and they're approved through the Community Action Agency. And now this wouldn't, the, really the part of the city for this is that we're agreeing to bill this third party group for those approved homes or households that meet that after they've been pre-approved. So we're basically working with them. We're going to provide them information on the accounts as part of this agreement. On what's owed and what's been paid. And then we're going to build them and accept a delayed payment without shutting off the users. So it does require a little bit on our part, but it does provide another vehicle to help assist those folks that are, you know, maybe they've lost their job or they're unemployed over a period of time and, and they meet that threshold and qualify. Now, we have a number of outlets that we send folks to that struggle with their utility bills, but it's always nice to have another. It's a little additional administrative work on our part, but I've talked to staff internally and they feel like we can work it within our system. And it just provides more of a benefit than it is extra work on our part. If you have any questions, I can answer those, but that's really it.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve participation in the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program and allow the city administrator Harding to sign the final agreement document with Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency.
Well, my roll call.
Can I find out who did second? Cause it sounded like three people at once.
I heard Nico.
Okay. We'll go with that. Counselor Caceres.
Hi.
Counselor Seha.
Hi.
Counselor Ecclestone.
Hi.
Counselor Lee.
Hi.
Counselor Seeny.
Hi.
Counselor Wick.
Hi.
Mayor Clevenger.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Moving on, Ron, your report, please, sir.
Well, this is the odd week, so there are the odd meetings. So we really don't have a comprehensive report, but I will draw council's attention to the fact that the city did receive the Tree City USA Growth Award from the Arbor Day Foundation. That's for the work that we've done and our dedication to trees. Obviously, the last few years, we've done a lot of work. And then we'll also probably, I think it's the next meeting in April, we'll schedule the Arbor Day proclamation. And we should have our plaques and stuff in and we'll bring those to show to council as well. And then just internally, again, we're working on lots of grants. Both the ORPD grants for parks and the direct congressional request spending are due this Friday. And I am in a sprint run all this week to make sure that we've got all the I's dotted and T's crossed. So we have the best chance of success on both of those. So we're working on that. And then finally, the other thing that's on our priority list is our chief, police chief recruitment. We do have three candidates. I did send an email out to council to prepare for some discussion tonight. And to find out if council does want to convene a full council panel to interview candidates. And if you do, we need to select some days because we will want to start doing interviews. If not, all of you have the time or want to do that as a full group, then we can take whoever wants to do it and move them into some combined staff interview panels. But I could see the full council, if you all can commit to a day, making a good interview panel.
I absolutely want to be there for all of it. You find a day, I'll make it happen.
I'm pretty much of the same mindset.
So everybody want to commit?
I'm available.
Okay. So have you looked at some dates? Should we do a, could we do a doodle poll? Would that be better for council?
Yeah, maybe do a Google poll or what's the other one, Survey Monkey or whatever the heck it is. Do you have, do you have like a general idea of like, we're talking next week, the week after?
Yeah, I would either next week or the week after. Yeah, one of those two. So sometime after Wednesday of next week, I'd probably need till Wednesday to get prepared and make sure we've got everything, all the packets put together correctly. And, and then of course, we have to make sure that, you know, we don't want to spring this on our candidates and not giving them time to ask for the day off or. So it'd probably be next week or the week after. Let me send out a survey and we'll try to pick two or three days that we're all, you're all available. And then we'll, then if we can pick those days, we'll then go out, find out what days the candidates can be available.
Sounds good.
If you do have any specific questions, I did get some, I'll look at those and see how we could rework those in. And I've gotten, right now, I probably have upwards to 50 questions. Now, we're going to be able to ask about 10 in a normal interview process. So probably the most we're going to get to select is about 20 questions. And I'd like to mix them up. So we, I don't want to guarantee you that we'll use every question you submit, but we'll try to pick from those and try to get the ones that will provide the best insight. But I have gotten some pretty good ones. I'll rework a few of those. But if you have others, send them to me and I'm just going to put my little HR hat on and and work them. And then we can go from there. And then what we want to do is make sure that we just have prepared questions so that all of the candidates are asked the same questions. Now, you can ask follow-up questions based on their answers that are ad lib, but we want to start off with the same set of questions for each candidate.
Will you send out the questions that you would have that, that 50 or whatever you have, send it out just so that there's some sort of frame of reference of what we're looking at, what potential questions there are and what we might want to add?
Yeah, I can do that tomorrow. Let me go ahead and rework it. And what I'll do is I'll go ahead and make a list of 10 questions that I, I would think would be questions to ask. And then you can slice and dice them.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we're not like, you know, if me, Nico and Scott are all bugging you to ask the same question and it's already a question that's in there. There's no, no reason for us to waste anybody's time. So if we have that frame of reference, I think that'll make it a bit easier for process.
Yeah. And I would think that your questions would be more related to how that person fits within the community. So we've got a number of those in there. So it's probably already on the list. It's just maybe phrased differently. But we would like to see, do we have a viable pool? And the only way really to know that is to take them in through the interview process. All right. Well, let me get that off to you guys. I'll get the poll out. But we'll plan on trying to do something within the next two week period. Does that sound fair?
Yeah.
To council?
Sounds good.
Okay, good. And then we are going through a lot of staff changes. We have had some resignations in the police department for a variety of reasons. So we're not at full Uh, so we're not at full capacity, uh, right now. And we do, uh, we are in the middle of recruitment process. Uh, so we're working on that, but you should know that we are, uh, down in capacity there. And also in, um, just in our administrative office. Um, we're having a number of changes. Uh, we've actually brought in a temporary employee. Um, so if you know a superstar. Uh, I say superstar because by, you know, I, I got a lot of things to do and I, I need people that can really get in there and. And do the work. And so, um. You know, we went through a number of, uh, potential candidates, but, uh, just not the right fit for what we need. Um, so if you know somebody, let me know and just know that we're going to go through, there's a. Training curve to get them up to speed to be able to help us with some of these key, um. Programs and projects, uh, otherwise, uh, you know, I'm having to, if I have to get in and do each of the. Internal parts, then the, the position doesn't quite provide that benefit that we want. So. So we are going through, so just know that we've got a lot going on and we're really shorthanded. Um, but we're working as hard as we can.
You got anything else for us, Ron?
We're still working on a theme for the corn festival. I know, uh, Colleen did reach out to, uh, the folks at the school district to get those young creative minds working on it as well. Um, but if anybody has any ideas, we've got lots of ideas, but you know, you hear them and they would all work. Um, but we're always trying to do something, you know, a little catchier. So. So if you have an idea, let us know. Just email us.
All right. So what mayor, mayor and council reports, anybody got anything? So I, I think I mentioned this before, but government being government. I, I keep. Getting told I'm going somewhere and then I'm not going somewhere. So as of right now, I'm home until the end of May. I'll be gone May through the end of June, but if nothing changes. Um, that's, that's. The, the only time I'll be gone for the foreseeable future. Um, if something pops up, I'll be sure to let the council know. Uh, but as it stands right now, I will be gone May 27th through June 25th. Um, to Nigeria and Senegal. So. That'll be fun. Uh, good to the order. Anybody got anything? Correspondence, uh, everybody has in their packet. That is the, uh. Tree City USA, uh, growth, whatever, whatever it was that Ron, the, the. What did they call it? Growth award. There we go. So obviously we're working on that and obviously we, we, we lost some trees during the freeze, but we're going to try and fix that. If nobody has. Anything else? Then we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. I have seven thirty seven.